We've already knocked, but it never hurts. One, two, three, four, five, six. Okay. So can we have the roll call clerk?
Your stewardess in the chair, Councilor Carr. Councilor Dijonovas on a leave of absence for personal business, Councilor Frye. Councilor Swanson. Councilor Hardwick, not in the chamber, Councilor Weeb. Councilor Boyle. Councilor Dominado, not in the chamber. Councilor Bly is on a leave of absence for civic business. Councilor Kubiya. You have quorum, Mayor Stewart.
Thank you very much. I first like to acknowledge that we're on the unceded territories of the Musqueam, Sleabaltoos, and Squamish, and we thank them for having cared for this land since time immemorial. And of course, also want to thank staff for all their hard work and doing their best for the city. So procedure for the committee of the whole, in order to avoid procedural uncertainties which arose at previous, at a previous public hearing due to a loss of quorum, while in the committee of the whole, the city clerk has advised that while counsel is required under section 18.13 of the procedure bylaw to move a motion to go into committee of the whole at a public hearing, it is not required to sit as a city of the whole during the hearing. Therefore, it is her advice that the motion go into the committee of the whole, be put to a vote, and failed by the council. Would someone like to put a motion to go into the committee of the whole? Forward. Councilor Weeb. Looking at this side. Okay. Councilor Carr. And remember, it would be good if this one failed, so all in favor? No one in favor? All opposed? There we go. So that motion fails. Opposed, all opposed, I think. Great. So before we begin, I have some announcements. Speakers at these hearings, and there's a few tonight, should limit their comment, should five minutes speaking time, and should limit your comments to the merits of the report being considered. Speakers should actually state whether they are in support or oppose the recommendations. Speakers may only speak once, but any additional comments can always be submitted in writing to publichearing@vancouver.ca. Those speaking on behalf of three or more persons or three or more organizations have up to eight minutes to speak, but these persons or representatives must be also, also be present, and must not be speakers themselves. Finally, if council does not conclude hearing from all speakers this evening, we'll recess and reconvene the meeting on Thursday, March 14th, here in council chambers at 3:00 PM. And with that out of the way, we're going to start on our first rezoning, and have the clerk read the application and summary of correspondence received for 4118 to 4138 Camby Street. Please go ahead.
This is an application by Penny Farthing Hillcrest Development Limited to rezone 4118 to 4138 Camby Street from RS1 one-family dwelling district to CD1 comprehensive development district, to permit the development of a six-story development containing 66 strata residential units, height of 22 meters and a floor space ratio of 2.94 are proposed. Since being referred to public hearing, council has received one piece of correspondence in support of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to approximately 2:50 PM today.
Thank you very much. We have Tiffany Rojo, who's a planner, and she is here to provide information. I am going to ask council in each one of our applications tonight whether or not we want to hear the, whether or not we want to hear the presentation from staff. So I will start with this one. Do people want to hear the presentation from staff, or can we go right to questions? Right. Okay. So we'd like to hear the presentation. Please go ahead.
There we go. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Tiffany Rojo, rezoning planner for this item. So this application proposes to rezone a site at 4118 and 4138 Camby Street under the Camby Corridor Plan. Staff receive questions from council, which I'll respond to near the end of the presentation. The site shown outlined in red is comprised of two single-family lots zoned RS1. It is located on the southeast corner of Camby and King Edward Avenue, across the street from the King Edward Canaline Station. As this slide demonstrates, there have been numerous rezoning applications for mid-rise residential development at this significant intersection. The sites currently have two single-family homes on site. The applicant has rented each of the homes rather than leave them vacant during this process. Both houses are tenanted, and the applicant has informed staff that all tenants were made aware of the rezoning application prior to signing leases. As council is aware, single-family homes are not covered by the current tenant relocation and protection policy. However, tenants would be eligible for one month's rent and four months' notice to end tenancy. This application proposes to rezone the site from RS1 to CD1 to permit the development of a six-story residential building with a total of 66 strata residential units. The application is proposing a total of 47% two- and three-bedroom units, surpassing the 35% family housing unit requirement. A maximum height of 72 feet and an FSR of 2.94 is proposed. The proposed building anchors the southeast corner of King Edward Avenue and Camby Street while framing a rear courtyard which provides outdoor amenity, open space, including a children's outdoor play area. Additional common and private outdoor amenity decks are located at the rooftop, as well as a green roof with substantial planting. A parking entry ramp is located at the lane. In addition, staff are seeking public realm improvements along Camby Street, King Edward Avenue, and the lane with a terrace natural stone rotating wall and continuous landscape border along the site edges. Overall, this proposal meets the intent of the Camby Corridor Plan. I will now provide some background on that plan. So the Camby Corridor is located along Camby Street from West 16th Avenue in the north to the Fraser River in the south. The area covers over 1,000 hectares, which is almost 9% of the city's total land area. The corridor has been undergoing major transportation since the Canaline opened in 2009. Phases one and two delivered overarching planning principles, and the Camby Corridor Plan approved in 2011, which provided land use policies for key sites and arterials, and an interim public benefit strategy. Phases one and two resulted in significant and ongoing transformation of the corridor as more people chose to live close to high-quality rapid transit and access the amenities available in the corridor. On May 8th, 2018, following three years of planning work, council approved phase three of the Camby Corridor Plan. Phase three was the final phase of a comprehensive three-phase planning program and incorporates all phases of planning into one comprehensive document. The intent of the plan is to guide and enable positive change in the Camby Corridor over 30 years from when the plan was approved, and it provides direction on many aspects of the community, including land use, built form, housing, and community well-being, and includes a detailed public benefit strategy. The plan is closely aligned with the city's housing strategy and focuses on providing a range of housing types and affordability levels. The plan enables new forms of housing to be introduced throughout the corridor in close proximity to transit, amenities, job space, and services. Throughout its three phases, the Camby Corridor Planning Program hosted 122 public events with over 8,700 people attending to provide input. The three-year public process for phase three alone included over 60 events. Staff made use of social media, radio interviews, open houses, coffee chats, and other methods to reach and engage with community members. The process also included continued engagement with eight community groups and 14 city advisory boards and committees. This map outlines the 30-year vision for the Camby Corridor Plan. The plan is implemented specifically through two types of rezonings: city-initiated rezonings and developer-initiated rezonings. The colored areas shown in the overall Camby Corridor map are areas where developer-initiated rezonings can be considered. Rezoning applications must adhere to specific direction laid out in the plan. Developer-initiated rezonings cannot be considered outside of these colored areas. On the magnified map of the Camby Corridor Plan, the yellow allows for three-story townhouses, the pale pink allows up to four-story residential buildings, and the orange sites along Camby Street allows up to six-story residential buildings. The subject site is located in the Queen Elizabeth neighborhood of the Camby Corridor Plan. Subsection 4.2.2 of the plan specifically supports residential buildings up to six stories in height for this site, and a density between 2.0 to 2.5 FSR, noting that this range is an estimate based on intended urban design performance. The development potential for each site may fall within, below, or above this FSR range. The plan also provides further built form design guidelines, and the rezoning application for 4118 and 4138 Camby Street meets these criteria. This slide once again shows the number of mid-rise residential developments that have been approved at this significant intersection. The intent of this already transitioning single-family neighborhood is to introduce new low-to-mid-rise buildings along King Edward, transitioning to townhouses, and new mid-rise residential buildings along Camby Street. As previously mentioned, there was extensive public engagement and consultation over the three-year development of phase three. The public has been well-informed of the planned direction. For the city-hosted open house held in May 2018, 600 notifications were distributed, 10 members of the public attended the open house, with zero responses received from the public. The application drawings and details were made available online, along with my contact information and that of the applicant, and a form to easily submit feedback. This application is located within an area of the plan identified for target rate community amenity contributions. For any rezoning application submitted within a target CAC area, applicants will be asked to contribute a target CAC rate per square foot of approximately $68 on the approved net increase in density beyond the existing zoning. This application, proposing to increase the density of floor area by approximately 49,000 square feet, will provide a CAC of approximately $3.4 million to be allocated toward the community benefits outlined in the public benefit strategy. Further, a DCL of approximately $1.85 million would be anticipated. I'll now turn to responding to questions received from council. I'll address the questions one by one. The first question is how much CACs have been collected in the Camby Corridor, and when did they start accumulating? Up until May 2018, approximately $315 million in CACs, both cash and in kind, have been secured through approved rezonings under the Camby Corridor Plan. These CACs began accumulating following the Camby Corridor Plan approval in 2011. CACs are due at rezoning enactment, so there is a time delay between being secured and being physically contributed to the city. I can confirm that to date, however, in the Camby Corridor, approximately $102 million worth of CACs have been received. The next question is what have the CACs been allocated for? The Camby Corridor Public Benefit Strategy for the corridor north of 57th Avenue provides strategic direction to guide the city, including council, park board, and library board, in making investment decisions on public amenities and infrastructure in the corridor. This slide shows the categories of anticipated public benefits and only some of the highlights of what is to be delivered over the next 30 years. $161 million over the next 10 years is expected for affordable housing, of which $118 million is expected to come from developer contributions such as this project. Based on the Camby Public Benefit Strategy, approximately 24% of the CAC for this project would go to affordable housing. Details on what is anticipated through the public benefit strategy and what has already been delivered so far can be found in the Public Benefits Implementation Tracker in Appendix F of the report. The next question from council is how many below-market units have been funded at what rents? One of the priorities of the Camby Corridor Public Benefit Strategy for the first 10 years is to increase affordable housing supply by supporting an additional 550 social housing, 190 below-market rental, and 1,500 secured market rental units.
Just to interrupt you there, it looks like you had the wrong slide.
Yeah, I went ahead too fast.
Okay.
There we go. Thank you, Mayor. Up to May 2018, 55 social housing units have been completed or are under construction, and 290 social housing units have been approved. No below-market units have yet to be approved in the corridor. However, with the approval of Camby Corridor Phase Three last May, there is a great opportunity to deliver significant affordable housing, both social and below-market, particularly in the Oak Ridge Municipal Town Center. Below-market units will have the same rental rates as the city's Moderate Income Rental Housing Program, or MERP, and will be tied to the unit regardless of tenant turnover. Targeted at $30,000 to $80,000 household income band, the current below-market rates are $950 a month for a studio, $1,200 for a one-bedroom unit, $1,600 for a two-bedroom unit, and $2,000 for a three-bedroom unit. The next group of questions received from council has to do with the parking provisions and its implications on the type of development we see. Questions were whether the parking provided in this project is too much, how much the condos and the development will sell for, and should we be concentrating on locating lower-income housing near transit? To answer the first part, the project does meet the minimum requirements of the parking bylaw. Unit price for strata residential development is not part of the information we ask the applicant to provide, and we leave that up to the market to guide the price of the units. As you may know, the parking bylaw was updated and approved by council on July 25th, 2018. This update includes increased focus on active transportation such as higher requirements for bicycle parking, and this project meets those requirements. The second part of the question is shouldn't we be concentrating on locating rental and lower-income rental housing development near Skytrains for those who are less likely to own cars? The yellow sites on the map show approved secure market rental and seniors' developments. Market rental is permitted, and as demonstrated in the map, is already happening in the immediate area. Rental developments are given a reduced parking requirement, and to meet seniors' housing development needs, vehicle parking is even further reduced. For example, some of the parking reductions available are up to 10% reduction for proximity to transit, up to 20% reduction for transportation demand management measures, and additional reductions are available for rental, up to 60%. The last group of questions is regarding CACs and the approach of using them to fund some of the community amenities related to population growth. The first question is what impact would this project have on gentrification of the neighborhood? This proposal is coming in under the Camby Corridor Community Plan. With a community plan, the site's two single-family homes would likely be redeveloped with larger single-family homes. Instead, the proposal provides an opportunity through 66 strata units, including 31 family units, for people who wouldn't be able to purchase standalone homes. Gentrification by definition is the displacement of existing population Gentrification, by definition, is the displacement of existing population due to social and economic factors. The intent of community plans is to guide growth to achieve a balance between accommodating existing population, new population, and increased livability in the neighborhood. Most importantly, community plans aim to create a more equitable future for the neighborhood for a wide range of households. The Canby Corridor Plan aims to achieve this by providing for more variety in housing choice and the opportunity for a diverse of households to find suitable homes, including market condo, market rental, below-market rental, social housing, two- and three-bedroom apartments, and ground-oriented townhouses for families. The final question is how much does CAC spending on community amenities increase the value of developers' land holdings, and how much is the city's reliance on CACs contributing to the housing affordability crisis? This is a complex question, and there is no demonstrated correlation between CACs and an upward pressure on housing prices. For example, a review for the city by Coriolis Consulting in 2014 confirmed that there is no evidence that CACs are causing housing prices to rise and impacting affordability. It is much more likely that other factors are combining to drive up housing prices. These are international attractiveness, strong demand, and low interest rates. It is important to note CACs achieved through zonings like this project help pay for the delivery of amenities and infrastructure needed to support growth and contribute to creating a complete and livable community. CACs pay for amenities that otherwise would have been funded through property taxes. An increase in land value from rezoning is used to determine the appropriate CACs for each site. Collecting CACs is how we ensure each development contributes their fair share to deliver amenities needed in the area, including childcare, community centers, parks, and affordable housing. In summary, staff conclude this application to rezone 4118 and 4138 Canby Street from RS1 to CD1 to permit the development of a six-story six-story strata residential building with a total of sixty-six units and an FSR of 2.94 is consistent with the Canby Corridor Plan. Staff recommend the application be approved subject to the conditions outlined in Appendix B of the report. Staff are available to answer any additional questions you might have. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation. So is the applicant team here to speak to the application. Okay, thanks very much, and we might have questions for you later, but thanks for indicating your presence. Any questions from council or staff to the applicant? Great. Counselor Harbick, please. Up to five minutes.
Thank you. This may seem like kind of a funny question, but I understand this is the site of one of Vancouver's reportedly most haunted houses. Some people may know the stories. It is a legend. It's also supposed to be on the location of longtime described Indian burial ground or First Nations burial ground. So my question is, in preparing this site and examining it, have we looked at if there is indeed a First Nations burial ground on the site?
Yes, staff are aware it's a highlight on the haunted house tours. But so we did our due diligence and checked the provincial heritage sites, and it does not land on any areas of concern for us.
Yeah, I'm not at, that's not my question. I know it's not a heritage site, but it seems to me that if anybody's going to break ground on that, that they ought to have someone come in and I mean, if it is genuinely a First Nations burial ground, if they get a few feet underground, we'd want to know that, right?
Yeah, I think that issue could be dealt with at development permit stage.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Sponson, up to five minutes.
Yes, thank you. I'm just wondering if there are any plans in the Canby Corridor to have any kind of housing that serves people who are earning under $30,000, as they make up probably about 20% of our population and are the ones that are in the most housing need. Yeah.
So I just want to draw council's attention to the fact that we're talking about this specific report and proposed zoning. I understand there was some discussion about the use of CACs. So I would just like to draw that attention to councillors, but also get staff to think about that as you're replying to us. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor and Council. Lil Ronald, Senior Planner. Thank you. So Canby Corridor, as Tiffany had mentioned, the plan was developed in three phases. The Phase Three Plan includes a tremendous opportunity for social housing, which would reach the below $30,000 salary. So in our municipal town center, which Tiffany had highlighted, we do have requirements for social housing. As well as on our large sites in the Canby Corridor, we also have requirements for social housing.
But my question isn't about social housing per se, because that can be at market rent. My question is about housing for people who are earning under $30,000.
Well, some of that social housing would be made available for people that are earning under $30,000.
Any idea what proportion?
Because Dan's not here. We don't have that proportion. Those would be worked out through housing agreements with the operators in terms of the proportion. Thirty percent of the units must be made available at or below hills rates, and within that, depending on the housing agreement negotiations, that could be worked out at that time.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Boyle, up to five minutes.
I'm just curious to hear a little. I know we have a policy around the number of parking spots, but considering the proximity of this building to the Canada Line station, I was surprised to see seventy-one parking spots for just sixty-six units. And so I'd be interested to hear more about that.
Sure. John Turekide with Transportation. So the actual provision of parking spaces with this particular development works out to about 1.1 spaces per unit, which is actually relatively in line with what we would see for a strata development like this in terms of actual vehicle ownership rates. Understanding that this is close to transit, there are certainly opportunities that are available to the developer if they should wish to reduce the number of spaces. However, at this point, the policies and the parking bylaw do not require the developers to reduce that amount.
Okay, and similarly, it listed there were eighty-seven bike spaces. Is that with sixty-six units? I'm just curious about all of these numbers, and that seems low to me relative to the number of units if...
Yes, yeah. So the bicycle parking provisions would need to meet the current bylaw when this comes in for a development permit. And at that point, the eighty-seven that's proposed as part of the rezoning would not be sufficient, so they would need to meet the increased provisions that are now in the bylaw.
And other than those provisions, that's just up to the applicant in terms of what they think sells to the market there?
Yeah, in this part of the city, we specify minimum requirements for parking and then provide a number of opportunities to reduce that, but it is up to the developer to take advantage of those.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks very much, Counselor Boyle. Onto Counselor Frye.
Yeah, thank you. And actually riffing off some of Counselor Boyle's comments about parking and transit-oriented development and that. Do we have a sense, is there extra density that's being transferred here on account of the proximity to the Canby Corridor and proximity to Skytrain that would be, say, extraordinary in other parts of town?
So, great question. The intent behind the entire Canby Corridor Plan was to introduce increased density, building on the $2 billion investment that is the Canada Line. So moving from single-family to increased density in the six-story that's proposed today is one of those moves. This particular station was identified as a lower-density station versus the two primary stations at 41st and Marine Gateway.
Okay. So where I'm going with this, and I can appreciate that the Canby Corridor Plan has already sort of been set up, and a lot of the moves have been made. I'm curious what the cost of the land on assembly was, because I'm looking forward now to the Broadway Corridor and how we might take lessons from the Canby Corridor or Canada Line and how maybe land values were inflated by speculation and how we can maybe mitigate that impact the next time, that being Broadway. So I'm curious if you know what the cost of the land assembly was when they purchased it, and if that played a factor in the delivery of the units and what we're seeing today.
So just before we go there again, just trying to squeeze it into this particular...
But I think it's relevant.
Well, I'll let you go on this one, but let's try to steer it back to the main...
Appreciate that, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
No, we don't know what the acquisition cost is. When we do our planning programs, we have an understanding of what land values are. That helps us understand what we can ask for in terms of housing requirements, social housing requirements, below-market, what we can actually achieve, what that viability is. For the Broadway Corridor Plan, there is the development cost expectation, which has been implemented, which is a measure to prevent speculation. So that has been introduced already.
Okay, thank you.
And again, if councillors have questions that are relevant but kind of outside of the scope of the public hearing, please send your inquiries to staff, and then maybe we can have council briefings on particular plans, like, for example, this one. Thank you. Over to Counselor Weave.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. The CAC of $68.12, did we do a performa on this project to see what percentage of the land lift we are receiving as a city?
Target rate CAC, no individual performa for this application is required. So when the target rate CAC was set, there was an area-wide study.
Okay. Do we think that we are delivering the 75% to the public that we would normally see on a project like this if we didn't have that targeted CAC?
Can you just repeat your question one more time?
Do we think that we're achieving the 75% target to receive CACs to the public for this project with the current proposal, or is it something we need to revisit?
Sorry, I should introduce myself. I'm Yan Zhang, Senior Res zoning Planner. I would say that's the intent. You know, the target rate CAC is updated on a regular basis and is meant to be in keeping with the 75% of land lift in the area.
Okay. Some of the proposals in the Canby Corridor talked about having a four-story and then a bit of a setback for the top two stories. Is there a reason why this project has a very small setback from stories four and five?
The proposal has setbacks above the fourth story, so it has a shoulder setback. At the corner, the balconies project into that setback to kind of give more prominence to the corner. But the shoulder setbacks are provided. I think there's some small encroachments into the setbacks that we felt were modest and that it was otherwise meeting the intent of reading the four-story base to the building.
Okay, and last question. The density range of 2 to 2.5 FSR suggested in the plan, why do we have a suggested range when this project, a bunch of them will come closer to three?
This is part of the Phase Two Plan that was approved in 2011. And at the time, it was intended that these projects would be performance-based. So there's detailed performance guidelines, recognizing that we're coming up with densities. We're trying to take a one-size-fits-all approach on a number of properties, and that's a difficult task. We have changed and modified that as we moved forward with Phase Three. So Phase Three sites, when they come forward, will be slightly different. But for the Phase Two Plan itself, it was to be based mostly on performance objectives, recognizing that density is a product of the massing guidelines, your setbacks, your upper setbacks. And so that's what was meaningful for the community. And so you will notice for different plans, some will be a hard cap. For this one, it's not.
And how many units would have been lost if this was dropped down to 2.5? Would you know that range, or no?
We'd have to do that analysis.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Weave, Counselor Kirby Young.
Thank you. You had mentioned kind of one of the amenities or sort of perhaps more of a design element was really sort of the interface with the street and sort of the streetscaping. I wonder if you can describe that in a little bit more detail, recognizing that's a very busy corner and a lot of traffic, and I think it was referenced on one of the slides. I'm just wondering if you can be a bit more descriptive about what that street level, interface and connection with the street would look like? Landscaping, other features?
I can answer that for you.
Thank you.
Marie Lenahan, Senior Development Planner. So there's a landscape border along the street edge, and on West King Ed, there's a retaining wall. So there is some relief from traffic noise for those units at the ground floor. There are also outdoor patios provided along the street edge with individual entries, and they're intended to animate both streets, Canby and West King Ed.
Sorry, you said some individual...
Patios. Each unit has a patio and access to the patio, a door to the patio.
Okay, but looking at it from the pedestrian point of view and the pedestrian experience, can you perhaps describe it from that aspect?
Yeah, so along Canby, there'll be individual entries to each of those patios. So again, to provide that animation and engagement with the pedestrian. At West King Ed, there's a continuous retaining wall because there's a significant change in grade on the site. So for that location, we're not requiring the individual patio entries. So it will be a retaining wall, a stepped retaining wall with landscaping that will provide a kind of visual and acoustic buffer for those ground floor units. They'll still have patios, so there'll be some engagement with the pedestrian realm, but there won't be that direct access that is able to be provided along Canby.
Okay, thank you. And the second question, actually following up on Counselor Hardwick's earlier comment on a serious note, since it is reportedly or reputed to be an Indigenous burial ground, have staff done any verification? Or do we have any specific knowledge to indicate any veracity of that statement? Because I know it has been reportedly in sort of common dialogue, but I'm just wondering, because that's obviously a sensitive topic.
Tiffany Rojo, Res zoning Planner. We did ask Development Services staff to look at any available archaeological maps, and that's kind of where they had referred to them as provincial heritage sites. So I think that the archaeological maps are incorporated in those heritage sites. And they notified us that there was nothing to be alarmed about, that there were no.
Okay, and maybe you could expand on that in terms of if, you know, once kind of that site work was underway, if anything were to be found, what the city's procedure and process is at that point, if something is found on a site, identified?
Sites are required. The ones have been flagged. For example, down near Sesnam, which is in the Marple community. They have been flagged by the province, and it's required that an archaeologist be on-site during excavation. So because this site has gone through an early review, we can go back and double-check during the development permit stage. But at this point, it has not been flagged, and an archaeologist would be required.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, and that's it for questions from council. So now we'll have from the public. We have two speakers on the list. Alan Bium, thank you, Alan, and then Todd Constant after that. So Mr. Bium, please go ahead. You'll have up to five minutes. There you go.
Okay. Mr. Mayor and Council, as Chair of the Ridley Park South Canby Community Vision Steering Committee, a thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. And as noted in our November 28th congratulatory note to you, the Ridley Park South Canby Community Vision Committee has played an important role in the rapidly changing landscape of our community. We're an engaged community participant, and this is exemplified by our ongoing discussions with many of the developers and their respective architects for projects along the Canby Corridor as well as other areas within the RPSC community. The current project is an example of a developer offering us the courtesy to discuss one of their projects. And when we met the Penney-Farthing representatives in early 2018, preliminary plans were discussed for the project. Since then, a few changes have been flagged by our steering committee. What is the significance of bringing this up? Well, on initial reading of the 2019 drawings, both the height and FSR have been increased, and this is somewhat disconcerting. After further reading and discussion of the height difference... further reading and discussion of the height difference, we now realize that there is a discrepancy in how the calculations were done, thus creating what we feel is a conflict of interpretation, where there's one item noted there as the lowest average grade, and then there's sort of a main floor height. So in addition, the loss of ground level area, the amenity space, had to be moved to the roof from what we initially saw. This situation could have been avoided if the requirements had not changed in midstream. RPSC initially saw these as an upward creep from the original design presented to us. And really, what this means to us as a community is that similar types of changes have been allowed in some other projects along the corridor. Corridor's guidelines, as just mentioned, six-story building and FSR of 2 to 2.5, but unfortunately, there's a significant amount of what we call simply wiggle room in both. This has given the community projects that are rather excessive, not this one, but others, such as there's a seven-story building in the 4900 block of Cambi, and a very large project in the same block but across the street on the west side, where density was allowed to increase to near 20% beyond the original presentation. The RPSC Steering Committee had originally accepted both the height and the FSR to this project because of the building's configuration and more importantly, because the city was asking for land on the King Edward's side of the property, approximately 1,500 square feet for a bus bay, which could be... which will be constructed in the future, so we understand. We're also aware of the Engineering Department's request for changes in the access to the underground parking, thus forcing a change in amenity space location. As RPSC has pointed out to city representatives at various venues, such late changes appear to be indicative of what we describe as a silo problem with the lack of communication between departments. RPSC knows that the Planning Department does suggest that developers contact us to present their projects for both an informal discussion and some feedback, but there are often changes made between that stage in the process, subsequent stages, excuse me, and a situation in which we are at at this moment. This process, we feel, should be improved. Open houses are also held in this interim period, but again, how effective are the public comments in preparing a more final presentation of a project? There are also developers who never contact us, so the amount of community feedback is simply unknown. As the city council approved watchdog and having eyes and ears on the community since November 2005, RPSC continues to offer constructive criticism with a positive attitude to the many changes within the community. It's important for any organization to have what we simply know as corporate history, and RPSC is fortunate to have this most useful attribute to bring discussions on matters to the planners and others concerning the community. Thank you.
Sorry, got my mic on here. There we go. And you have a number of questions, sir. So councillor Kirby Young, please, up to five minutes.
Hi, thank you. Thanks for being here. A few quick questions. I just want to get some clarification. You mentioned the requirements changing in midstream. I wanted to give you an opportunity to elaborate on that a bit and if you could be a bit more detailed.
When the reps from Penny Farthing spoke with us in our informal discussion, we then we found out that there was going to be, for example, the parking, that there would be... They're developing just to the south of the present site, the site under discussion. And so we thought that they were going to have, you know, combined parking entrance. We then find out that that's not the case. Engineering would like to see separate entrances for each project. So therefore, the developers really put on the spot when they start off with one and then go to another, and that's, I guess, simply, you know, is each department communicating with each other. And it's not unique to city, you know, the city planning department. We've had that experience with Park Board as well.
Okay. I've bet on both. So for greater clarity, you weren't suggesting that the developer was changing based on the dialogue you had with them, but that the city parameters perhaps need to be evolving?
I don't think they would have changed the parking entrance had they, you know, had not been told, sort of, you know, in midstream to try to go through these plans to change something else.
Okay, no, that's great. That's helpful to know. And to my next question, you mentioned...
And I think one other thing, when it comes down to that, we also find that in communication, and our big concern is comprehensive traffic plan for the entire Cambi corridor, or at least for the Riley Park South Cambi area, and we are still waiting for that to take place.
Okay.
So again, different departments, and we know planning can't do it, but it has to come from some, more than one aspect of the engineering department.
Great, thank you. I'm going to move on to my next question, which, as you mentioned, you're happy with the consultation, and I wanted to clarify, you're referring to the developer, so that was a positive process from your perspective?
Yeah.
And for greater clarity, you do support this project. You're speaking more globally in your concerns to the corridor as a whole. Is that right?
We know that, as we said, that probably had the city or TransLink maybe not required a bus bay to go in there on that corner, which is, you know, substantial. It may just going to be 10 feet deep, and the length of the property along 25th or King Edward, if that had not been required, then we would have probably seen a lower FSR as well. But they're now taking, I mean, you're encroaching from the curb 10 feet in, so the sidewalks have to be moved, and we understand there's also a bike lane coming in. Am I answering you?
Would you like to expand about the bike lane?
That's all I know. We've heard that there may be a bike lane along that road. I know nothing else.
Interesting. Okay. Thank you. I'm going to leave it there for now. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. A couple more questions. councillor Carr, please go ahead.
Yes, thanks, Mayor Stewart. Thank you, Mr. Bium, and for consistently coming to council on these issues and the work of you and your organization. I'm particularly grateful to the fact that you do offer, as you said, constructive criticism. I've seen you come and say yay to this or problems with that, so appreciate that. The actual changes that you say occurred, or that did occur to the project are noted in the actual report itself. There were changes, but I'm just going to follow up with you, and then I'll follow up with staff, that the changes, they're on page four of the report, and it just says, "In response to staff comments, the applicant submitted a revised application that shows the independent ground, underground parking access." That's the change that has forced other changes that you're concerned about. Is that right?
Yes. I think that's what had, from the initial, you know, from we heard, when we heard about it last year, that by moving the parking entrance, they then had to remove because there was no amenity space on the roof. Now they're putting it up there because they've had to lose space on the ground level.
Right, thank you.
From our understanding.
Okay, thank you. I'll follow up with staff on that and make sure that we're clear about why that change happened. What do you think about the green roof?
Well, it's fine. I mean, we certainly support a green roof. There's no question about that. I mean, we've had other developers come in with something like that as well, and yes, it's a positive approach.
Okay.
Provided, of course, that the contractors know that there's a potential leakage. That's an aside.
One assumes that technology is getting better and better as more and more places require it. My final question is around the comprehensive traffic plan that you've been asking for. How long have you been asking for that for the Cambi corridor?
Nothing under two, at least two years, if not more. And I guess, one of our last discussions centered around the Oak Ridge Shopping Center and the redevelopment there, and a couple of people attended one of our steering committee meetings, and we didn't find it a satisfactory response because they were just talking about a few blocks from, say, 41st to 49th, or 45th to 49th. They were not talking about 49th Avenue. The 41st and Cambi intersection is, you know, going to be chaos, to say the least, with more and more traffic there. We know that there's a beeline bus coming in on that one, you know, an improved service rather than what they have at the present time. We also know that a comprehensive traffic plan is needed east of Cambi and between Cambi and Maine. When we look at Little Mountain Housing Site with 1,400 units coming on stream, when? Nobody knows. But at the same time, we know that car drivers find nice ways of, you know, cutting through neighborhoods, et cetera. So there is a real need for a comprehensive traffic plan.
Right. And tell me how that plan, if that plan was, if you had it and was in place, how would it help you in assessing a specific project like this?
Probably, you know, A, when the, say, the tenant, sorry, the owners in this new building, are they going to leave the parking in the lane east of Cambi Street? Are they then going to, I've got to find an easy way to get to Granville, if I'm, say, a driver. So am I going to go to 26, make a right-hand turn, make a left at 25, hopefully, if I can get onto Cambi, and then go left there? I'm certainly not going to, I can't make a left when I leave the lane going north. They're not going to allow me to do that, so I'm going to have to go around. Do I make a U-turn illegally, or do I go a couple of blocks and cut around through some neighborhood? You know what I'm getting at, you know, with regards to those problems?
Circulation and the movement. Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Thanks very much. And one more councillor's question for you, councillor Dominado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for coming this evening. Just really briefly, I just wanted to follow up on, just so I understand, is you mentioned the loss of ground level amenity space due to some changes that were made midterm. And so could you just elaborate on that? Because I know there's amenity space on the roof.
On the roof.
And there's amenity space at the back.
In the drawing, there's still a small space on the ground. Most, it was all going to be at ground level originally, from our understanding. Now it had to be moved to the roof.
So it's split between the two, the bottom and then also rooftop. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. And then...
We, I think, not, on that, hopefully, you know, five years down the road after the building's complete and you've got a strata council and what have you, they don't come to council and request putting up covers, you know, over that, because that would give them an extra floor.
Okay, I see. I see your point.
Your concern, yeah.
And then just one other question, just generally, though, with, how do you feel about the form and mass of the development? Do you have a...
We found it acceptable, yeah. And the configuration under the circumstances, yes. And there are no townhouses in the back lane, you know, because of what's behind them on the east side, or, yeah, on the east side of the lane, that large seniors development.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Thank you very much, sir. That's all your questions. Appreciate you coming in. We have Todd Constant next. Thank you for coming, Mr. Constant. Up to five minutes. Please go ahead.
Evening, Mayor Council. Nice to speak to a new council for the first time. I've been commenting on the Cambi corridor and some of the projects along the corridor since 2010. I've been involved in the RPSC Community Visions Plan since 2005. I have been mostly vocal against the higher-than-expected floor space ratio, FSR, and some massing on properties along the corridor. I have been supportive of the senior care center behind my home. I live on 26th Avenue, less than a half a block from this development. Although the senior care center is large, to be fair, we'll be honest, I'd like it somewhere else, but I think it is a necessary addition to the city, and therefore, I did approve it with some changes which the developer and the city did. Overall, though, I've had objection for some part of the, to some part of the development that has been, that has missed the mark from the principles of the Cambi corridor, the Community Visions Plan, like space between the townhomes at backs, too many units, too few parking spaces, too massive a build for the property, and general items that did not conform to the principles set out originally in the RPSC Community Visions Plan and the Cambi corridor plan. Nothing from then till now has really been kept in place. The first proposal of this project that had the underground parking and lots attached to the neighboring property with the resulting at-grade landscape area looked awesome. And I say awesome to the point where I was going to say, hey, this is a great plan. Don't change anything, regardless of some of the other aspects of the plan. The back lane, driving down, seeing that, it looked really, really cool. I understand that the city and engineering decided that there was too many legal concerns with connecting the two garages for the two properties and therefore split this one, ruining that back alley. And if I tell you the developer was upset, he was, they would rather have the at-grade amenity space because it was great. Okay, so I encourage both the developer and the city to see what they can do to get close to looking that, challenging that area to be as landscaped as it was when the original plan came through. Fast forward today. I'm asking why this building across from a transit station does not contain any below-market rentals like real affordable rentals for first responders and medical professionals. The rental rate should be subsidized to create affordable units below market value close to transit and the medical and emergency facilities. The developer is actually interested in sitting down with the city and seeing if we can go nine, 10 stories to see if we can get a couple of stories worth of low-market rental housing for these professionals and first responders. They would be under subsidized rents. I believe that this is an absolute possibility for the city and the developer to take part, looking at the CACs and how they're used, and actually achieving some of that low-cost housing for first responders now as opposed to in Phase Three, which I don't believe is ever going to be achievable due to the lower land values, et cetera, and people aren't going to move unless they get the proper value for their homes. I understand the Cambi corridor principles. I've been involved with them for almost 15 years now, but I also understand that there's a station right across the street, and the proposed buildings are already built on either side. There's six stories on either side. To go seven or eight is not going to be a big stretch. You're not going to lose anyone complaining about a view. You're not, you're really not losing anything by going, you know, a little bit higher here to gain that strength. So like the last council and, you know, the planners, they're on some other plane. You guys have to look at this, maybe properly approve it. I do approve the plan. I've dealt with the developer for years with other plans. I've met with him directly on this issue, especially with the change. So I smile when I hear of all the things that other people have said because I am aware of the change, but only from talking to the developer. I do believe that we have an opportunity to do something different here. I think this location is prime. I live here. I think you guys need to do something bold. On a separate note, I want to tell the developer, as well as all the other developers, city staff, I still live in a single-family residence, and I do expect that the properties are maintained by owners and developers. This site, as well as the site between 26th and 27th on Cambi Street, is a disaster. I appreciate developer cleaning up the property as it's been used as a staging area for the building next door, which is now completed, and the current state of the property is an absolute disaster. Last time I checked, the dump was on Kent. I bring up the fact that the house is haunted on the corner. I brought some correspondence to that. I'm going to leave it to the city and you copy. It was from 2010, and that is correct. It could be on ancient, medieval grounds, but with the fact that there have been developments on both sides, no one has found anything, but I don't think anyone was looking.
Thanks very much. And that's your five minutes.
Yep.
Thank you very much for your time this evening. councillor Fry actually has some questions for you, sir. I'm going to put you on here and up to five minutes, please.
Mr. Constant, I just wanted a little clarity. So not often that we get resident proponents coming and asking the developer to be bolder and to go taller in order to, you're saying to, in order to achieve... Yeah, so you, and you've had conversations with the developer to this extent that they could, with a little bit of extra density on that site, achieve some...
Yeah, over the 2 to 2.5. The density has never been followed with the guidelines. This is an opportunity. I wouldn't be one to bring it up, but it has to be for low-cost housing or for first responders, something meaningful and something bold. It's good for the developer, it's good for the city, it's right across from the station. I do believe that there is enough parking because the station's there, and I've watched the other buildings get completed, and I'm quite a car driver, so I watch parking and everything. I do believe that there's enough. I do believe people are going to use transit car to go Evo and Uber when it gets here. The is, the is, there is a bike lane coming to King Edward, and the only place I've seen it is on one of the drawings at the city for the senior care center, and it was right in front of the senior care center, and the senior care center was saying, well, what are we going to do? This is a palliative care center as well, and I don't know if it's been thought out because that's where they're going to stop. So I will confirm with Alan that I have actually seen a bike lane on King Edward as well, but I don't think it's been really thought out because there is the senior care center.
Well, thanks, Mr. Constant. I mean, I think it may be too late to change this plan and this particular development, but I appreciate your candid support for what you've offered and suggested.
There's already two six-story buildings on either side, so going a couple of extra stories really isn't a big deal.
Yeah, no, appreciate it. It's refreshing to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So that's it for speakers that have signed up. I'm going to put my handy script A. So are there any other speakers who have come today that would like to speak to this report? I'm going to call three times. That's the once. Any other speakers twice? Any other speakers, twice? Just in case you're out in the foyer. Three times. Okay. Seeing there are no speakers, the speakers list is now closed. As few or no public comments were received on this item after 5:00 p.m. today, I suggest we now close the receipt of the public comments and move on to hearing closing comments, asking further questions of staff, and to making a decision. Does the applicant have any closing comments? Any closing comments from, okay?
Good evening, Mayor, council. Just jotted down a few notes that I thought I'd just speak to. One issue brought up about the amount of parking, and really designed there is feedback from the, you know, existing neighborhood about the congestion of parking and lack of, there is plans for a bike lane to come down Camby Street and turn up King Ed, further reducing parking, and so that's been a big piece of feedback. The second one is with regard to the nature and history of the corner site. You know, we've looked into it, and the best we can tell is urban legend. We developed right next to it, and there was developments right adjacent to it with no incident, so we have no reason to believe this one single lot is any different. So thank you for your time and your consideration of the project.
There are actually a couple of questions here. I've got folks on the list. I'm not sure if you're to the applicant, but I've got Councillor Kirby Young on the list.
Yeah, they may be better directed to staff.
To staff? Okay. Move along then, Councillor Carr.
Yes, to staff. Thank you.
Hey, I actually have a question for you, sir. So we have heard, we did hear from the last speaker that there was perhaps a local appetite and for a couple of extra stories here if they were affordable housing. Is there anything you'd like to say about that?
Yeah, I mean, the discussion with Todd was definitely talking about, in theory, about the future. We, you know, I'm fully aware of the Camby Phase Two and the approved plan and the limits of it, though I think Todd's ideas has merit on projects going forward.
But perhaps not on this particular...
Not on this, yeah.
Okay, that's good. Thanks very much for your thoughts. Councillor Kirby Young, I've got you back on the list. Is this for the applicant? Okay. Sorry, sir, you have another question.
Sorry to bring you back there. I'm going to ask a couple of questions of you, just to understand your perspective, and I'll be asking the same questions of staff. The first one is really about that change in the parking and the impact from your perspective. You can speak to it on landscaping and the street interface?
Yeah, for sure.
And so what that actually meant from, in terms of, on your side? I'd like to understand more about that.
Yeah, thank you for the question.
Because given that the Camby corridor has such legacy and history as a historic boulevard and that big, beautiful green space in the city, so it's nice if we can keep some of that at street level. So I'd like to understand what, where that process was.
The origin of the idea, which is not uncommon on Camby Street, is joint parcades for buildings, where buildings are connected with one egress, an entrance for cars. And so as we designed, as been previously mentioned, we've done the building, which has just been completed directly to the south, and so that building was designed with that connection point in mind. The, so under the first iteration, the idea was to have the building to the north serviced from the adjacent buildings parcade, which obviously allowed for more space on the main level. So, yeah, directed by staff and engineering to make the change and to make the building work on an independent parcade entrance. While it was a challenge, I also understand the city's perspective in challenges with other projects with joint parcades and the, just the process of how they actually manifest themselves, and uses have been challenging. So I understand the city's perspective of wanting independent, separate parcade ramps. So I think we made the appropriate adjustments. I think we made the best and had a good result at the end of it.
So what changed, I want to really drill down in tangible specifics. So what changed specifically in terms of the street-level experience, back landscaping, design feel?
Yeah, for sure. So essentially, what was going to be, the courtyard in the back was basically just displaced to make for the entrance ramp. So the space is there now, so we just don't quite have as much from the lane side.
So primarily the courtyard?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. And then my second question is really on the apparent bike lane.
Yeah.
And I'm just wondering what's been conveyed to you by staff in terms of plans for that status specifics?
Yeah. And most of the information I've received on the bike lane is with our work with the current project that we've just finished. And so I haven't seen a design or of that from the city, but I know that the future consideration is there'll be a bike lane along Camby Street.
Okay. But was the status of the bike lane conveyed to you by staff in terms of this is conceived? It hasn't gone to public consultation yet? Hasn't gone to council yet?
I can't speak to that, perhaps staff can't, but I know that I haven't seen any drawings today.
It was just conveyed to you that there was plans for one? Is that fair?
That's fair.
Councillor Kirby Young? We can probably ask, just send along a question to staff by email about that particular item?
I'll follow up, and I'd like to ask staff if we can.
Right. Again, we're just sticking to this particular project, and I know there's a curiosity about new bike lanes, so, but again, the relevance of this project's important, so. Thank you very much, sir, for your time.
Thank you.
Okay. So does council have any questions for staff? Sorry. Does staff have any closing comments they'd like to make first? No comments? Okay. Sorry, I heard that without the mic. So any questions from council to staff? And again, reminding you, we're staying tightly in on this exact public hearing report. Thank you very much, Councillor Kirby Young. I'm just going to reset your timer. Please go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to ask the two questions. The first one, the same one I posed to the applicant, just about understanding the balance of where the adjustments were made, just because I know it in page four of the design, when it says the parking access change resulted in a few minor changes to the proposal, particularly with regards to ground-level design. So I'm looking for a summary from staff's perspective on that, please.
So generally, we certainly are supportive of sharing parking accesses where that is possible, and typically, when we do have projects that share access, that's identified early in the process. We're able to look at the design of both parcades that are connected to ensure that there aren't created any security issues or any other potential issues. In this case, the site to the south, the planning for that secondary access wasn't something that staff was aware of. And as a result, the circulation for accessing this north parcel as it was originally proposed required that vehicles would go through basically the entire first level of the parcade. And based on that, we have some substantial security concerns about how those two stratas would need to sort of manage that relationship through the life of that building. And it was based on those concerns that we were not comfortable with accepting that shared access in this case, as usually, when there is a shared access, the city is a partner on that agreement, so that neither one of the individual properties can dissolve that. And that means that we want to make sure that we're comfortable with all aspects of that agreement when it goes into place.
Okay, thank, and then my second question was really around something that speakers brought up earlier, was around the traffic management around the site. So the bus bay was mentioned, for example, in the bike lane, and it is specific to the application in terms of understanding how the design allows or incorporates, allows for that, given this potential proposed bike lane. So how does that factor into the proposal specifically that we're considering, or does it?
Yes, it does significantly. There are conditions as part of this proposal that require the applicant to fund the construction of the complete street treatment along Camby as well as along King Edward. Those two facilities are shown as part of our five-year planning map, and that's available online from Transportation. So we're looking at complete street treatment between Yukon and Heather Street, which are two of our important sort of regional citywide bikeways. And so that would include expanded sidewalks, special bus boarding islands to ensure that the folks who are waiting for the bus are not blocking the sidewalk, protected cycling facilities, as well as changes to the road to make sure that's functioning well.
Okay. And in that five-year plan, when those are all considered, whether it's the bus bays, bike lanes, et cetera, are those proposed and not yet approved? Or where are they in the status?
So those are at kind of the preliminary designs age at this point. So those, I'd have to check exactly where the status is on those two particular projects.
Okay. So when we're looking at something like this, and staff are looking at you're designing for potential use that may not necessarily, it may or may not be natural use? Is that, I'm just trying to understand in the context of this particular site.
So those two cycling facilities, as they stand now, will be going ahead. It's a matter of finishing, kind of collecting the funds that are required, since those are funded from...
Okay. So those were approved by council previously?
I would have to check exactly what the process was around that, but my understanding is that that is the case, yeah.
Okay. If we can get verification, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Carr, up to five minutes.
Yes, thank you. Mayor Stewart, and my questions are really a follow-up to staff on Councillor Kirby Young's. I noticed that in the conditions of approval in Appendix B, there is the necessity to fund 100% the future construction of protected bike lanes adjacent to the site, right? And so that I understand, but I was looking for the bus bay, and I couldn't see that. Is that not in part of the conditions of approval?
Let me just slip through here to, so under the conditions of bylaw enactment, there is requirements for, as part of the servicing agreement, to fund provision of the new alignment, which includes, and I'm quoting here, concrete sidewalk, curb ramps, transit pasture amenities, street lighting, additional pedestrian scale lighting, as well as the cycling facility there. That's in Appendix B, page seven.
Yeah. Okay. I'm on that page. And I certainly got the part about the bike lane, as I say, I just didn't see the part about the bus, the transit piece of it. But when did, how, those came in later in the stage of this development application? On page four, it says, so that there was a revised application. Did we only find out or decide through the process, after the first application came in, that we wanted to change things around transit and/or anything else? Is that, I'm just wondering why the timing was later in the process?
My understanding is those offset improvements would have been a condition throughout the process, and that would have been communicated at the pre-submental stage as well.
Okay. So what exactly then prompted the fact that there was a need to change it? What I'm getting at here is that there was consultation with the residents' association, but then subsequent to that, there was a revised proposal which changed the ground level in part response to the bus lane. So I'm wondering why it was later in the process rather than early in the process, so that the residents' association would have had the opportunity to have understood the, well, maybe there wasn't, wouldn't have even been a need for a revisal.
Yeah, I'll let Yan respond to that question.
Tiffany Rejo, Resoning Planner, I'm happy to respond to that. So the revised application was required in response to the staff review. So the application that came in originally at the beginning of 2018, we did require it to be revised. Upon review of the application, staff found that shared parking access, as John mentioned, with the neighboring development was not supportable, and that's what prompted the revised application.
Oh, it was more the parking?
It was just strictly the, having to include a parking ramp in the proposal, whereas the original proposal had shared parking access with the development to the south.
Okay.
And as such, so the slight increase in height is due to the narrowing of the building because of a parking ramp being incorporated into it.
Okay. All right. And what about the changes in the landscaping? Is that all because of the changes in the parking access? Because one of the speakers raised the point about the bus bay, the sort of bus, not lane really, but, you know, indent, so that there could be parking there. Did that impact the landscaping? I'm just wondering why the changes?
The parking access only impacted the interior courtyard. It didn't have any impact on the streetscape. The design for that streetscape, for the bus boarding area, the cycling facility, that's still in progress, and so the design that's shown on the drawings here will change.
Okay.
Yeah, so the only section of the proposal that would have been affected is the southeast corner where the parking ramp is now located. It was a larger outdoor amenity space, so it's been since consolidated into a smaller site.
Okay. Okay, that's clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Boyle?
I have a pretty simple question. I've just looked at a few different drawings of the proposal, and I'm curious about the shared outdoor amenity space and how that gets designed. I saw one drawing of it, I think, in the staff presentation with a kind of kids' play area, and so I'm just curious if that, if it's a, I know there's a number of family-sized units in it, is that part of how it's planned, that it's a particularly kind of family-oriented thing, or is that just in what we see of the drawings and it's still to be determined?
Yes, the indoor amenity space as well as children's outdoor play space is a requirement for any of these developments.
Okay. Okay, that's all I was, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I can further confirm that as the proposal progressed, the next stage, development permit stage, those will be looked at in further detail.
Okay.
And the design may change.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just want to check if there's any more questions on this? No? Don't see anybody else in the speaker queue? Okay. So council will now make its decision on this application. Do we have a mover for this recommendation? Councillor Kirby Young and a seconder, Councillor Hardwick. Is there any debate? Just on the main queue, don't see any? Okay. So we can call the vote. Oh, right in on the last, Councillor Swanson?
Yeah. I just wanted to say that I'm concerned that we keep approving projects that don't provide the affordability that we need for the 20% of people who need it the most, who are always the last priority.
Councillor Swanson? Yes? That's more of a general statement. We're focusing on this particular project, and of course, so if there's something particular...
This is about this project?
Yes.
This is about this project, because it's not going to provide any housing for people that need it the most. And I just wanted to continue by saying that the priority, the people who are the lowest income are always subject to the, will we get money from the feds or the province? Whereas people at higher incomes aren't subject to that.
This is way off the particulars of this, more of a policy debate, and of course, you're always welcome to put motions in on council, but about this particular project that we're talking about, this six-story project, are there any particular comments about this?
The second issue is that this site should be for people who use transit. We know that renters have about half the income as owners and are less likely to be able to own cars, and so it's, in my opinion, we should be putting rental in places that are this close to transit and not owners who will be mostly using cars.
Okay. Thank you for that. Councillor Carr?
Yes, I'm going to speak in support of this project. I just want to note for all of council that there was very little response at the, during the stage of the development of this project. There was a public open house, 10 people attended, there was no public feedback. I'm very happy to see people come to give us feedback today, but, you know, I think this project, notwithstanding the kind of comment that Councillor Swanson made in general about housing and the housing supply in this city, this project does meet the actual policies embedded in the Camby corridor plan, and that, so it has followed and met those, and so is, in my mind, supportable for that reason. I'm particularly pleased to see the green roof. I guess we're going to be seeing more of them in multifamily developments as we move forward, as per the council's decision that took place last year. And, you know, the accommodation really of transit, I think, is critical, that transit and alternative forms of transportation, so the anticipation of a bike lane and the accommodation of transit, both of which are going to be, become only that much more important as transportation modes as we move forward in the development of the city.
Thank you, Councillor Carr. Councillor Kirby Young?
Thank you. I know that we always have to wear our regulatory hats when, in the public hearings, and look at whether or not the applicant is meeting the policy as it's currently set out and articulated, and in this case, they are. I do want to just make one acknowledgement, and that is that it's refreshing to have people come to speak at council and residents that say that they had interaction with developers, number one, which is very positive, that they are, feel that they're able to have that dialogue, and two, that they were happy with that process, are able to participate and feel heard. So I hope that that's, I just wanted to provide acknowledgement and thank the applicant for that, and the residents as well, for participating and being a voice in their communities, particularly the resident association gentleman that spoke earlier, because I think that because I think that does make for a stronger process if we can have that level of dialogue so that that engagement has actually happened before it comes to council. So I just wanted to acknowledge and thank both parties for that, and hope that more of that can continue so that we don't hear about challenges at public hearings. But that is part of the natural process of building neighborhoods together. Thank you.
Thank you. And that is it. So I'll just keep my eye on the speaker list to make sure nobody else is going on, but it looks good, so we'll call for the vote on this, please. And we have, this has passed with Counselor Swanson in opposition, but all other councillors and myself in favor. So thank you again to the applicant and to the staff for all their hard work on this, and congratulations. Okay, the next item on the agenda is text amendments, miscellaneous amendments to various CD1 bylaws. The clerk will now read the application and summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by the general manager, planning, urban design and sustainability, to make amendments to CD1 696 Comprehensive Development District at 500 to 650 West 57th Avenue, Pearson Dogwood, and to CD1 624 District at 3819 Boundary Road to allow for an exclusion in the computation of floor area to facilitate enhanced accessibility and to amend for a minor adjustment to the percentage of dwelling units. Council has received no correspondence on this application since it was referred to public hearing.
Thank you very much, clerk. So we have Alicia DeJolay here. I don't know if I got that right, but sorry, my apologies, to speak to this. But however, counsel, I'm just going to ask if you want a full presentation or if you'd just like to ask questions to staff. I'm going to ask that on every application today. I saw that, so, there are no speakers on this? So would anybody here like to hear the full application, full presentation? Nope. Okay, so we can just move to questions. Are there any questions from council to staff? Let's put yourself on the list if you have some. I've got questions here from Counselor Carr, and there's lots of time. Don't feel rushed if you just want to take a little bit. Counselor Carr?
Yeah, I know.
Just going to reset my timer.
Sorry. Hi, my name's Alicia DeJolay, planning, rezoning planner, and there was questions at referral that I want to answer now, actually.
Those are mine.
Those are yours. That works out well.
Yeah.
Okay, so go right ahead then.
So the first question referred to 3819 Boundary Road, and it was about council's authority to allow a decrease in the percentage of family units from 25% to 17%. Of course, council has the authority to approve alterations to previously approved CD1 rezonings at public hearing. The owner or city staff can make an application to change the CD1 district schedule. In this case, the city has initiated an amendment to better facilitate the delivery of social housing. Council has the authority to approve or not approve the proposal as written in the report. More specifically, possibly to the point, was, under the rental 100 policy, there is a target of 25% of family units in each project. Had this remained a rental 100 project, it would have met these requirements. It has changed from rental 100 to a social housing project. Staff do have greater flexibility with minimum bedroom requirements in social housing projects, and in this case, it became difficult to deliver social housing with the 25% minimum due to requirements set out by BC Housing, but also their spatial constraints of the site as it's a small restrained site at the end of a block. So that's the first question. The second question is about whether the two two-bedroom units would be replaced by two one-bedroom accessible units each. And unfortunately, yes, there will be a loss of two one-bedroom units, but a gain in two one-bedroom accessible units. So staff deem this loss to be acceptable as the units would be accessible. Those are my two questions.
Okay, thanks very much for that. Counselor Carr, did you have any other, any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Counselor Weave, up to five minutes.
Yeah, just a quick question on the 10 square meters to facilitate the accessibility. Is this something we've done in the past where we give relaxations to ensure that we allow more accessible features in projects?
The purpose of this rezoning was not to allow more accessible features. It was actually due to funding requirements and two-bedroom size requirements set out by BC Housing and the spatial constraints of the site. So had the project be able to fit two two-bedroom units as intended, it would have stayed the same, but the site was small, and the BC Housing requires bedroom sizes of a certain size, and it wasn't able to fit on the site. So what they decided at the development permit stage is that it would be a good idea perhaps to swap out the two two-bedrooms with one-bedroom accessible, two one-bedroom accessible units, because one-bedroom accessible units are larger than one-bedroom units, but not as large as a two-two-bedroom, or a two-bedroom unit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I don't have anybody else on the queue. Give you some time here. Nope. Okay, nobody else on the queue, so I'll just make a call for public speakers. Once. Anybody else want to speak to this? Twice. One more time? Three times? Nope, so there's no speakers. As few or no public comments were received on this item after 5:00 PM today, we should close the receipt of public comments and move on to hearing closing comments. And does the staff have any closing comments you'd like to make? Okay, thank you. Counselor, have any final questions? I don't see anybody on the queue, so we'll now move to make a decision. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Hardwick, aside. Counselor Dominado, thank you, seconded. Any debate? Nobody on the queue, so we'll call for vote on this one. Okay, that's good. Unanimously passed. Thank you very much. Thank you, staff, for your time. Okay, so third item is a text amendment on West Second, Manitoba Street, West Second and Columbia Street. The clerk will now read the application and summary of correspondence received. Please go ahead.
This is an application by dialogue to amend the text of CD1 531 Comprehensive Development District at 103 to 127 West Second Avenue and 1753 to 1791 Manitoba Street, and 165 to 195 West Second Avenue and 1778 Columbia Street to add fitness center and animal clinic as allowable uses. Council has received no correspondence on this application since it was referred to public hearing.
Thank you very much. And let's see, so I'm going to ask the same thing of council. We have Tess Monroe here from the rezoning center to speak to us, but I was just wondering if you'd like to hear information about this or if you'd like to move to other bits of the... Counselor Kirby Young, you look like you want to... Okay, please go ahead.
Just a point in procedure, and when we're in a public hearing like this, are we required to call, read out and call each one individually? Do we have the opportunity to adopt on consent? I believe the answer is no, but we have to do each one? Okay, thank you.
I have to call three times for public input?
On each item, you can call it.
That's right.
Great, thank you.
Okay, no problem. Okay, so thank you, Counselor Kirby Young. And so, looks like we'll wave the, is the application team here then? Thank you very much, staff, and just, we might have some questions for you. Application team here, would you like to present anything at this point? I don't see anybody coming forward. So are there any questions from council to staff or the applicant? Counselor Carr.
Sent my question prior to referral, so they will have my question on 333 Seymour.
Okay, I'm just going to...
I believe that's the next item.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Did I miss one in here?
Sticky pages. So can I take you off the...
I have no questions.
Okay, thank you very much. And so I don't see anybody else on the speaking queue. And I'm just going to make then, call three times? No, I think we did that already. Sorry, did I miss that one? Yeah, okay, thanks. It's going too fast. Three times for speakers, once. Anybody from the public would like to speak to this? Twice? Three times? Okay, thanks very much. So seeing there's no speakers, the speakers' list is now closed. Since there were no comments after 5:00 PM, we'll close the receipt of public comments. Does the applicant, I didn't see the applicant here, but are there any closing comments from the applicant? Any closing comments from staff? Thank you. Does council have any questions for staff or the applicant? Doesn't look like it. Okay. Council now makes its decision on the application. Do we have a mover? Counselor Kirby Young, seconder, I'll go to this side. Counselor Hardwick, thank you. Any debate on this item? Don't see any, so we'll call a vote. Looking at the voting. Oh, Counselor Kirby Young, just waiting for you to vote. Thanks very much. So that has passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Thanks, staff, for all your work and time. Okay, so now we're moving on to item number four. What's this, a text amendment on 333 Seymour Street? The clerk will now read the application.
This is an application by B&amp;H Architects to amend the text of CD1 164 Comprehensive Development District at 333 Seymour Street to increase the permitted maximum floor area from 16,194.3 square meters to 18,442.4 square meters. Council has received no correspondence on this application since it was referred to public hearing.
Thank you very much. And is the, yes, Tess Monroe's here again. So I've just got to ask council again, would you like to hear a presentation on this item or just to save time for questions? So anybody that would like a presentation, just signal. I don't see any. Okay, thanks very much. So maybe I'll ask the applicant. Is the applicant here? Would you like to say anything to council? Okay, thank you very much. Any questions from council to staff or the applicant?
I will note that we do have one question for referral, and I do have some slides that illustrate the answer.
That would be great if you would go ahead with that. Thank you.
So at the time of referral, staff received a question from council related to how the increased floor area improves the functionality of the amenity areas. The existing configuration includes a double-height squash and racquetball court and small gym on the second floor, shown here in purple. The applicant has indicated that the courts are currently being underutilized by office staff within the building. This proposal will enclose the double-height area to allow for additional office space on the third floor, as shown here in yellow, and a much larger gym area on the second floor, as shown in purple. The enclosure of this space will allow for better utilization of the internal layout, and the improved fitness amenities will be available to employees at both 333 Seymour and the new development neighboring the site at 601 West Hastings.
Great, thanks very much for that. And so, are there any other questions? Counselor Carr is okay. I don't see anybody else on the speaking queue. Oh, Counselor Frye, have you there? Sorry, I'm just going to move you ahead. Okay, please go ahead.
Yeah, I was just reviewing the community amenity contributions for this project, and I'm just, obviously, they seem quite low, and I thought maybe you could just set me straight on why it says low as it is. Is it the nature of the upzone space that is reflected there?
So the amenity contribution is a flat rate based on the commercial linkage target, which is $15 per square foot. So it's based on the additional floor area, not on the entire building.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Frye, anybody else with questions? Okay, I'm going to call for public speakers then, if anybody would like to speak to this. Going once. Going twice. Three times. Thanks very much. Seeing there are no speakers, the speakers' list is now closed, and we haven't received any public comments after 5:00 PM, so we're going to close the receipt of public comments, move on to hearing closing comments. Does the applicant have any closing comments? Nope. Okay, thank you very much. Staff, any closing comments? Nope. Okay, thank you. Counselor, have any questions? Don't see any. Okay, so we'll now make our decision on the application. Could I have somebody move it? It's Counselor Hardwick, a seconder on this side. Counselor Dominado, is there any debate? See nobody on the list, so we'll go to the votes, please. Turn my machine off. Great, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. And that's it. Congratulations. Okay, so we're moving on to item number five. It's a text amendment to 1768 Cook Street, and the clerk will now read the application.
This is an application by IBI Group Architects in conjunction with GBL Architects to amend the text for CD1 582 Comprehensive Development District at 1768 Cook Street to permit additional floor area on levels 16 and 17 and the addition of a penthouse level. An increase in the maximum building height from 47 meters to 53.3 meters, the number of stories from 17 to 18 stories, and the floor space ratio from 3.5 to 3.7 are proposed. Since being referred to public hearing, council has received six pieces of correspondence in support of the application and five pieces of correspondence in opposition to the application. This represents all correspondence received up to approximately 2:50 PM today.
Thank you very much. We have Tess Monroe here again to answer questions. Just wondering, would somebody like to see the presentation? Okay, we've got a head nod, so we'd like to see the presentation, please.
A presentation is prepared, and I will note that staff received one question from council at the time of referral, which I'll respond to within this presentation. Additionally, I'd like to remind council that a yellow memo has been distributed in your agenda package, providing a revised version of Appendix C of the staff report using the most recent version of the Southeast Falls Creek ODP bylaw. No further action is required by council, and staff are available to answer any questions you may have. This application proposes to amend the text of CD1 582 for 1768 Cook Street to increase the permitted FSR and maximum building height for the previously approved building that is currently under construction. The site, shown outlined in yellow, comprises an entire city block. The current CD1 was enacted in 2014, and a development permit was issued for the site in March 2017. The enabling policy for this application is the Southeast Falls Creek Guidelines for Additional Penthouse Stories, which was adopted by council in 2010. This policy allows for consideration of an additional one to two stories and commiserate additional floor area subject to urban design considerations and a contribution to public benefits. To date, a number of rezoning applications have been approved in Southeast Falls Creek that have incorporated additional stories and extra floor area. As shown by the red stars, more than 20 buildings located in the vicinity of the subject site have been approved with additional height and density, including buildings immediately to the east and west of 1768 Cook Street. This has resulted in a taller building context surrounding the subject site. At the time of the rezoning application in 2006, the maximum building height permitted for this site was 47 meters as set out in the Southeast Falls Creek ODP. The proposed amendment would permit an increase in the maximum building height to 53.3 meters and an increase in FSR from 3.5 to 3.7. This would allow for the expansions of level 16 and 17, along with the addition of one penthouse level, resulting in an increase from 17 to 18 stories, as shown highlighted in yellow on this slide. During the review of this application, we have heard some concerns from neighboring residents related to view impacts and shadowing on public open space in the area. While some private views from west-facing upper-level residential units directly to the east of this development site may be impacted, the proposed height continues a line of similar residential heights in the area, with neighboring buildings directly to the east also achieving additional height under this policy. Setbacks have been provided at the upper stories to minimize the apparent mass of the building and reduce impacts of the additional height on shadowing and views. We also heard some neighbors that there were concerns with this building shadowing Hinge Park to the north of the site. Shadowing of public space was reviewed by staff, and a detailed shadow analysis was provided by the applicant. Staff have consulted with the Vancouver Parks Board staff, and based on the location of trees and its existing shadowing on the park, the minimal incremental shadowing shown here in red has been determined to be acceptable. As noted in the report, the additional public benefit contributions received as part of this increase in height and corresponding floor area are intended to assist the city in achieving the housing affordability goals of Southeast Falls Creek ODP and its public benefit strategy. As part of this application, the applicant has offered an additional CAAC package evaluated at 5.1 million based on the additional density. An additional public art contribution and DCL payment is also anticipated. At referral, there was a question from council about the number of units being proposed in the application and how housing costs in Southeast Falls Creek could be impacted by additional penthouses in the area. This application proposes an additional three units over what was approved in the development permit. This is a specialized market, and the extent to which the per-square-foot sale price could influence other sale prices would be limited to comparable penthouse units in other buildings at similar levels. The Southeast Falls Creek ODP has a goal of creating a complete community with a mix of housing types in the area, including social, rental, and strata housing at varying levels of affordability, and has a goal of achieving 20% affordable housing within the Southeast Falls Creek lands. As of December 2018, the city had approved seven projects with a total of 715 social housing units, represented by the red stars on this map, and four projects with a total of 333 market rental housing units, represented by the blue stars. A portion of the CAC contributions from previous rezoning projects under the guidelines for additional penthouse stories was used to assist in funding these projects. Additional affordable housing is anticipated in city lands in Area 1A, identified in gray on this map. These projects have yet to come forward as applications, and is anticipated that CAC contributions from rezonings within Southeast Falls Creek will be used to help fund these projects. Another question from counsel was what CAC achieved as part of this, whether the CAC achieved as part of this rezoning was allocated towards, and could it be used to deepen the affordability of units in affordable housing projects outside of Southeast Falls Creek? The offered CAC package of $5.1 million has been proposed to be allocated to the public benefits in Southeast Falls Creek, which is guided by the Southeast Falls Creek Public Benefits and Compatible Housing Strategy. The strategy sets out targets and approach for supplying public benefits, including the role of DCLs, CACs, and other funding measures. The CAC received from this proposal can be used to fund additional amenities, including daycares and parks, as well as affordable housing within Southeast Falls Creek, all of which contribute to a complete community. CACs received from rezonings within Southeast Falls Creek are intended to fulfill the intent of the public benefit strategy, which includes funding the projects outlined on this slide, and offset the impacts of development within the area. This funding allocation is anticipated to come forward as part of a future capital plan. In summary, staff conclude that the proposed form of development is an appropriate response to the Southeast Falls Creek Design Guidelines for Additional Penthouse Stories, and staff and the applicant team are available to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And for the presentation, it's the applicant team here. Would you like to say anything? Thank you very much. Any questions? I've got a number of counselors. So Counselor Dominado, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. One question, just around the, obviously, this aligns with an existing policy. I'm just curious, this increase, was this something that the applicant came to us seeking to have that additional height in alignment with this current policy, or is this a conversation staff you raised because it would provide more CACs towards community amenities? I'm just curious how this came to be in terms of the dialogue, who initiated that conversation?
Yes, the applicant did come to us to align their building with the policy after it had already been previously approved, CD1.
Thank you. And I think you probably addressed it, but I had read as well the concern around the shadowing in the park, and that shadow study was done, it was March, was it? And do you do it, like, are they done at different times of the year, the shadow studies, just to look at the impact?
Yes, so the shadow study was done for the typical times that we do it throughout the year, so there was a full shadow study done. That slide shows when it was the most impactful on the park, and so it shows the time that it would have caused the greatest shadow.
Okay, thank you. I may have a few more questions, but I'll let other counselors go. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Carr? Oh, I'm sorry, I just knocked you off the list there. Itchy trigger finger. Just kind of messed it up, hasn't it? I took Counsel Frye off. Okay, Counselor Carr, you go ahead, and we'll clean up the rest of the list.
Figured it out. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor Stewart. Yeah, I'm just going to follow up on the questions by Counselor Dominado regarding impact on the park. I noticed that, and thank you for the slide that showed sort of the incremental increase on shadowing. Don't we have a policy that we're not supposed to allow shadowing on parks? Or how restrictive is that policy?
Michael Neiler, senior rezoning planner. I would say that it is not formalized in a policy. We have a working arrangement where we look at the hours between 10:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. on the equinoxes, and we review it with park board staff. I don't believe there's a policy, though, and this was reviewed with park board staff, and they were okay with it.
Okay, that's helpful. We've received correspondence on this item, and that specify, or that suggest that the additional height actually contravenes the Southeast Falls Creek Design Guidelines for Additional Penthouse Stories. And I'm going to quote to you the section of the guidelines and ask you to comment on that. The sections are that the guidelines state that additional height must minimize negative impacts on and off-site, including neighboring buildings, view obstructions, and privacy. And in addition, that the intent of the guidelines is to reinforce the neighborhood's prevailing character. So the correspondent, the resident who wrote to us, made it clear that their views will be very much negatively impacted. So can you please explain how, whether or not, in your opinion, the additional height does contravene the Southeast Falls Creek Guidelines for additional penthouse height or not?
Kevin Spanz, development planner. We looked at the adjacent relationships between this building and the neighboring buildings, and specifically, the potential impacts on upper-level units of the adjacent buildings. The building in question is, the top level of that building is divided into four units, and the unit in question is northwest-facing. There is a potential that some of their view will be impacted by the form of development, the additional height, but by virtue of their location within the building, they would still have pretty broad views to the north and to the west. So we determined in evaluating that adjacent development against this proposed site that the additional height, including the setbacks provided, would reduce as much as possible the impact on views.
Okay, thank you. Although, you know, I do note that the term minimize is part of the language. I guess that's a judgment call. Is that correct?
It is, yeah, yeah. It's, yes.
And the part about reinforcing the neighborhood prevailing character, how do you respond to the statement that that is not the case, that this change does not reinforce neighborhood prevailing character?
As Tess noted, the development is actually going to be more in line with the character of the neighborhood. Many of the buildings in the immediate context have achieved this additional height, and so this building is actually going to be more in line with context.
Yes, I really remember the presentation. Thank you. That's my questions.
Thank you very much. Counselor Frye?
Yeah, thank you. So, and please correct me if I'm wrong here, but as I'm reading the area-specific CAC policies, Southeast Falls Creek, $16.78 per square foot of net additional density is the standard, correct? And on this, we're looking at $459 per square foot.
The penthouse stories has a negotiated CAC approach for this additional density.
Yeah, you know, I appreciate it, and it's a fantastic amount of money. I guess where my question is going is if our standard CAC formulation is $16.78 per square foot on additional net, and we have a very area-specific target that we use those CACs for, can we think outside the box a little bit on these CACs? I noted on what was being projected is what, a lot of that infrastructure is already built, all that, you know, the greenways and the community center, and a lot of that stuff is there right now. We do have a critical need for, you know, things like temporary modular housing and housing opportunities throughout the city. I'm wondering if we can take advantage of some of that money and use it elsewhere, or are we stuck with that target, since we're breaking the mold on the CAC formula as it is?
I believe counsel has the authority to allocate the CAC as they wish. However, we have a public benefit strategy for this area. We also have a process by which we use the capital plan to fund projects. So it's a very complicated proposition to be allocating it in a different direction tonight at a public hearing. We would recommend that you approve it, as staff have put it forward, and then have discussions through the capital plan process about how money would be spent.
Perfect, so that money is not earmarked specifically. There's some flexibility on what we might do with that.
City manager's got to come in. Just a couple of things to say. Through the city plan process, we really want to engage in a conversation around the allocation of more CACs across the city, so we don't have haves and have-nots across the city, which is a little bit of what's happening now. So I think there's a rich conversation to be had, which I would recommend not having at the public hearing, but that we would have that, and we are preparing to have that conversation as a part of the city plan discussions, and maybe even some quick starts, as we've talked about. Beyond that, though, in this case, there is a lot of need in this immediate neighborhood. We've got great opportunities coming up for affordable housing and building up a little bit of a war chest as 1A happens to make sure we can really build affordable housing there. It's a significant opportunity. There's a park that needs to be built just down the street, so I think the conversation around the allocation of these will happen as a part of the capital planning process, and counsel will definitely have a say in that and be able to direct it. I wouldn't recommend doing it tonight.
And just to be clear, I wasn't about to propose some kind of amendment that was going to suggest policy on the floor on the fly. I just, I was more asking the question if we were going to have that opportunity. So I appreciate the answer, and thank you, city manager, for adding that additional detail. Thanks.
Thanks very much. Counselor Weave?
I'm just wondering on the view corridor, how close is this to the view cone? Either view cone 9.1 or 9.22. Just wondering if they were to go higher or... Because I know that that was a comment from...
Yeah, unfortunately, we don't have that information in the drawing package that we have here, but policy does not permit any additional height beyond what is in the bulletin to provide for the additional height for the penthouse.
I was just wondering how close it was and how much more leeway there was. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Counselor Carr?
Yes, thank you. I realize that I had one other question that I wanted to ask of staff and potentially the applicant as well. We did receive a question that came into us from a member of the public about why the scheduling of the public hearing took so long, and that they pointed out that there was a notice of the proposal to increase the height that was posted on the construction site at least six months ago before construction was started, and now construction is well underway. So if we could have an answer to that, and the other part of that perhaps for the applicant is, has the proposed height increase already been factored into the ongoing construction?
So the current construction is from a previous building permit that was issued for the partial construction of the building without the penthouses. The application that came in for this text amendment, we did do our standard notification with a sign on site and postcards to the neighboring community. That comes in when the application comes in to us, and then we post it on the website. A typical text amendment takes around six months, so that is where the delay happened in our review time, and that's when it went to public hearing, and we notified again about the public hearing.
Great, okay. Okay, so that is a previous permit, so the height hasn't been incorporated yet, and it won't until after whatever, the outcome of this meeting?
Yes. If this is approved tonight, then the applicant can make a minor amendment application to the development permit for the additional penthouse stories.
Okay.
Counselor Carr? And that's it for the speakers list. Now I'm going to make a call for, to the public, unless there's any more questions. Thanks very much. If you want to step forward and just state your name, and then you have up to five minutes.
Thank you very much, mayor and council. My name's Stephen Bohas. I live in Vancouver. I have a degree in landscape architecture, and I've actually been following this project for quite some time. So it's been through several CD1s, and I believe that in terms of policy, it's a very good textbook example of how not to do CD1s. So if we go back to the first CD1, which passed a previous council in 2006, well, it was a very, very low CAC. I'm not quite sure how many million, but it's very, very low. Staff will have the exact figures. And it took them many years till, I think, September 30th, 2014, for the enactment, and between that time, there was a tremendous amount of land lift in that property. And then there was enactment, there was, I believe, a re-rezoning for some adjustments for balcony space increase, and now we have this rezoning. And if you look at the current assessment, I believe it was 130 million or 100 million for the property, and you look at what it was in 2006, or actually go back to 2004, before the Southeast Falls Creek ODP, and if you break that down year by year, and you look at the current assessment, let me ask counsel, are we getting 75% of the land lift? Are we getting 80 million in total here, or are we just getting a fraction of this? And one of the big reasons that I want to bring this up, because, yeah, there is discretion in this negotiated CAC, and also that, counsel, going forward, consider putting a time limit on the time between a public hearing, approval, and the enactment, whether it's 18 months or 24 months, like you did in the '70s. Like, if you look at the Marine Gardens, original CD1, it had a time limit for the number of months for you to enact it. And if that's not done, consider having some language in there to adjust the CAC for a different valuation for the property, because I think we have lost tens of millions of dollars in potential CAC just by the way previous council handled this property. So going back to the Southeast Falls Creek ODP, there is a lot of disagreement about the form of the penthouse and whether it fits and so on, but I'm pretty sure it's 3.5 FSR. And if I'm not mistaken, like, staff have been talking about height, but let's look at FSR. So if you look at the adjustments to the penthouses on the other sites, and you look at this one, I'm just going to put it out there that maybe there isn't that much flexibility increasing the floor space ratio. And I realize that the building is well under construction. I think the proper time to ask for additional height is before it breaks ground. And I'm just going to just put it out there, like, have there been any pre-sales discussions on potential approvals on the upper levels on this site? I don't know, but I'm just putting this out, that I think there's a time and place to ask for an increase in height and a change in form. And in terms of architectural context, if you have a building and you have a mast and you have a statement of a facade or the way it approaches a street, tacking on another story and changing the upper floors, that actually changes the composition of the architecture. So there's also a larger building design question there as well, not just additional height and, in this case, additional density. So, yeah, I just want to leave that out there. In terms of not defining the CAC clearly, I think that would be a mistake by counsel, and I think the provincial government has also given a lot of direction on that the CAC should be clearly allocated at the time of the public hearing, rather than in the future, because if it goes in the future, it just goes and goes into some kind of unspent account, and we don't know how that's going to be allocated. So I would suggest that counsel consider allocating a CAC right now, and if you can't allocate it now, to put it off, maybe till the next council meeting, but to find a way to more clearly define that CAC use, rather than leaving it nebulous, because I think that's going down the wrong path for future public hearings and future rezonings. And I think that, as a Vancouver resident, for this property, we've missed a lot of land lift, and I think the, maybe the applicant could step up and offer a larger CAC, looking at that history. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, and I don't see any questions on the list for you, but appreciate you coming in tonight and sharing your thoughts. Okay, so I'll do my second call for public speakers, and third call. So the speakers list is now closed, and we've had no more comments after 5:00 p.m., so we'll close the receipt of public comments and move on to hearing closed comments. So does the applicant have any closing comments? Okay. Thanks very much. Staff, have any closing comments? Thank you. And the council, any questions? I've got three on the list here. Counselor Swanson? Counselor Swanson, please go ahead, up to five minutes.
Yes, thank you. I'm going to vote for this, which is quite unusual because I usually don't vote for luxury projects, but this is mind-boggling. 1.6 million in CACs for one unit. It's mind-boggling. Plus, in the staff report, there was lots of low-income housing being built in that area with CACs, so I can live with that.
Right on.
But I think it's really important that we do have that discussion that the manager talked about of how can we ensure that we do use these CACs to make things more affordable? For example, I'm all for having three more penthouses in the downtown east side if we could take that money and use it to make 58 West Hastings more affordable for people on welfare. It would be enough to keep them going for five years if it was this type of project. So anyway, I'm voting for it.
Okay. I didn't... Sorry, I made a mistake. I didn't get a mover and a seconder, so if I can get a mover and a seconder. I think Gene should move this one, actually. Gene, do you want to move this one, Gene? No? Okay, that's too much. I have Counselor Kirby Young, how about a seconder? We got Counselor Weave. Okay, thanks very much. We've got... Thanks, Counselor Swanson. Anything else?
No.
Nope, okay. Counselor Carr.
I thought we were going to do another round of questions, but I did have some questions for staff and although we're in now debate at this point, I'm wondering if I can have the questions answered. Ask staff?
Okay, I did call for that, but they are here.
I was on the list, but, you know, the mind-boggling statement by Counselor Swanson beat me to it.
Let's see. I guess so. Okay. Just one second, please. Apparently I missed your name, so my mistake, so chair's discretion, please go ahead and if you have any more questions.
Great, thank you. I do. And I really do arise out of the speaker, Mr. Bohas. I did point out a couple of interesting things I'd like to know the answers to. One is really the time period over which this project has been ongoing and whether or not, over that time period, we are collecting the public share of the increased value of the land lift, normally at 75 or 80%. My understanding is from other projects I've looked at. So is that the case in this project?
This site received its initial CD1 approval in 2006, as the speaker pointed out. So the CAC was done at that time, under the terms of that time, which is, incidentally, is this flat rate that has been mentioned, I believe, at $16 a square foot. And that was settled at that time. So once it's been approved by council at public hearing, then it cannot be changed. And we do not have a time limit on enactment. There is discussion amongst staff whether it would be a good idea to have something like that, but we do not have something and we have not had something like that for as long as I know. So the rezoning was enacted in 2014. So there is, once it's approved at public hearing, there's no opportunity to change the CAC.
You've answered my second question at the same time. This is a policy discussion that this is, so I'm not going to pursue that, although thank you for pointing out it could be an interesting thing to pursue at some other time. So given that, I will, at this point, just state my intent to vote for this. I do like the extra amount of CAC after the comment made by Counselor Swanson. Yeah, and it's interesting to me that, though, that the, you know, it took six months to get to public hearing, like that's the time the sign was posted. And I think we're all also interested in seeing if the process around approvals can't be speeded up. So that's a fairly long time to get to public hearing, although I do understand there was an election that happened in that six-month period and that could well have been the reason for some of the delay. Yeah, so I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you very much, Counselor Hardwick.
I had a question of the applicant, but if that's out of order, then I'll forego.
I guess I went a little fast, so I'll allow it this time along if you care to ask it.
Out of curiosity, what prompted this inquiry to add another penthouse story? How did you become aware that that was an option? Because it seems to me you were well underway in building a building and then I've just... What prompted it?
Sure. Peter Webb, I'm Senior Vice President at Concord Pacific. I think what happened was, the site has a strange history in that it was rezoned right through and approved by council and then sat in fallow for a long time while the owner, the original owner, tried to sort out how to do this project and where to go and how to build it. Was not, in fact, a developer, but a landowner. The Murphy Stationery was a landowner. And over time, it was brought to the market to a variety of developers to buy. We bought the property and then completed on the enactment and with the knowledge with the staff that we would come in and get additional density at some point with an application. So the building kind of allowed for the natural progression. And in fact, we didn't really add a penthouse. The penthouse already existed. The building just basically went up one story.
Well, thank you, Mr. Webb. One of the speakers suggested maybe that there would be a larger amount in the CAC that the applicant might like to put forward. Just putting it out there.
Yeah. Well, I think we're paying over $450 a square foot CAC for the additional density. We're adding to the previously approved rezoning that was all the way back in 2000 and change that we then enacted on in 2014. So, no, we really feel like we're paying maybe the highest CAC ever paid.
I think you're probably right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, your Counselor Hardwick, and thanks very much for your comments. No more questions. So I think I've done everything right now. So seeing no more speakers on the queue, I'll call for a vote. Sorry, Counselor Weave, I just saw you sneak in there. Is that... Okay. Okay. Wrong button, wrong button. So waiting for Counselor Dominado and Kirby Young? Okay, sure. Great, so that's unanimous. Thank you very much, council, and thank you to the applicants for your work and congratulations. Okay, so on the last one in the evening, Hornby Street, 1229 to 1289. Clerk will now read the application and summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by IBI Group Architects to amend the text of CD1 comprehensive development district 588 at 1229 to 1229, sorry, 1229 to 1289 Hornby Street to decrease the permitted floor area for subarea A by 429.8 square meters and to increase the permitted floor area for subarea B by the same amount, allowing for revisions to the floor plans on levels 34 and 35. Council has received no correspondence on this application since it was referred to public hearing.
Thank you very much, and we have Tess Monroe once again, just asking council if they would like to hear the full... Anybody like to hear, see the full presentation? I don't see anybody. I think we're good. Okay, thanks very much. You have some referral questions?
I did have one referral question and two slides that illustrate that. So the approved form of development for the site includes two mixed-use residential towers with the approved tower in subarea A currently under construction and the proposal in subarea B is for a lower-form residential tower. At the time of rezoning, approximately 46,000 square meters of floor area was planned for subarea A. Through review of the development permit, the design was refined and resulted in less floor area than was permitted in the CD1 bylaw. As noted, the applicant has applied to transfer 429.8 square meters of unused density from subarea A to subarea B within the previously approved tower form to create an upper-level mezzanine in the double-height units on level 35, as shown in the yellow box, to confirm there's no net change to height or massing of the building. At referral, staff received a question about the value of the proposed additional units and why no additional CAC is being provided. The value of the floor area for both towers was evaluated as part of the entire CD1 at the time of the original rezoning and a $22.6 million CAC was paid. The floor area being transferred is not considered to be of any more value in the building in subarea B and there is no change, and since there's no change in density, it does not merit an additional CAC contribution. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and the applicant team, is the applicant team here? Right, did you have anything you want to... Would you just like to answer questions or is there something you'd like to propose? Okay, thank you very much. And any questions from councilor staff? I have Counselor Hardwick.
One quick question, and that is around View Corridors. There's no impact of this transfer from one building to the other on the View Corridor?
No, and the building isn't growing in height at all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I see nobody else on the question queue. There's Counselor Frye. There he goes, sneaking in there. Okay.
So, and I can appreciate that there's no change in the amount of height, but when we're talking about change in land lift, is there more of a potential benefit to add to swapping those floor heights around and giving like a double-mezzanine height penthouse on the tower B? Isn't that part of... Again, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm just wondering, is that part of the calculation when we talk about CACs and these sort of discretionary amounts like the Concord just offered?
Yeah, I think in this situation, the floor area is coming from a much larger tower where it could have ended up in the upper 20 floors of that tower and it really doesn't have any more value landing in the penthouse level of the shorter tower. So it's an equivalent situation. I think staff would look at a differential in value if we could say definitively that it was lower-value floor area coming from a much lower, from the bottom of a tower moving into a penthouse, but you can't say that in this case because you can't ascertain where this 400 or so square meters came off of the larger tower. You could argue that it came off of the top 20 floors, so.
Okay, thank you.
It's okay. Okay, anybody else, questions for staff or the applicant? No, I'm going to call now for public comment. There's no speakers listed, but anybody like to speak to this? Going once, twice, three times? Thank you very much. So there's no speakers. Speakers list is now closed and there is no comments after 5:00 p.m., so we'll close the receipt of public comments and move on to hearing the closing comments. So does the applicant have any closing comments? Nope, thanks very much, staff. Closing comments, no. Council have any additional questions? I missed that one last time. I don't see anybody on the list. Okay. So council will now make its decision on the application. Do we have a mover for the recommendation? Counselor Hardwick? Counselor Dominado seconds? Is there any debate on this? Seeing no debate, let's move to the vote. Counselor Frye. Okay, and that's passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Congratulations to the applicant. Thank you to staff and applicant for presenting. And that is all on our docket this evening, so this meeting is... I would like to adjourn, I think. Yeah, okay. So motion to adjourn, Counselor Dominado, Counselor Hardwick, all in favor? Any opposed? Nope, that's it. We're adjourned for this evening. Thanks very much, everybody. See you back here tomorrow morning at 9:30. It's a birthday present for...
Thanks for listening. Thanks for listening.